County Commissioner McCallum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioners Tanara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Ria?
Yes. Correspondents?
County Commissioners, the right to write and access correspondence received by the court staff since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the Office of the Director's Department.
Motion to accept the correspondence. On the favor?
Aye.
Motion. The county stands for approval.
Minutes of the regular meeting held on Thursday, September 5th, 2024 at 6:30 PM.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Ball call?
County Commissioner Asko Wabber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Koppel? County Commissioner McCallum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tanara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Ria?
Yes. Reports of Commissioners. Commissioner Tyler Bellis, on the floor.
Thank you, Director Ria. Join us for a live cooking demonstration partnership with the Share Your Cook Ways on Monday, September 23rd at 10:00 AM at the Replenish headquarters at 28 Kennedy Boulevard in East Brunswick. On Wednesday, September 25th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the Office of Aging and Disabled Services will host the Silvian Health and Sickness Walk at Roosevelt Park in Edison. Please visit the county website for more information on indoor events. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenny?
Thank you, Director. Kenny has some projects that they're in the midst of either finishing up or hope to have completed by the end of October. One is a traffic signal installation at Oak Tree Road in Morgan in Edison that includes the realignment of the road, milling, paving, sidewalk, ADA ramps, and a fully actuated signal. This is scheduled to hopefully be in operation by, full operation by, next week. There's also the traffic signal upgrades at Roosevelt Avenue, Wedgwood Road, in New Jersey termed by Grant, and Roosevelt Avenue, and Industrial Avenue, Harrison Ave., in Carteret, Industrial Road, I'm sorry. The new traffic signals shall be coordinated by Better Traffic Flow, and this project is anticipated to be completed by the mid-October. And then we have the signalization of the previous stop-controlled intersection on Old Bridge, English Town Road and Mount Mills Road in Monroe, and that is expected to be completed by the end of October. The improvements include left-turn lanes, sidewalk storm drainage, ADA compliance, and a fully actuated signal. And the signals represent about $10 million in infrastructure improvements. And that's all I have, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Leslie Koppel?
Thank you, Director. Tonight I'd like to report that on September 9th, Standard and Poor's Global Rating once again affirmed Middlesex County a AAA bond rating, the highest rating attainable. This rate was triggered by our recent lease-purchased equipment program bond sale. This program finances fixed rate bonds by the MCIA, not the capital mills themselves, by utilizing our bond rating and allows participating municipalities to finance by old equipment out of lower cost. Additional advantages include no down payment requirements and allow for financing smaller capital needs that might not be practical to address individually. The rating reflects the opinion of this independent rating agency where the following accomplishments were noted upon the free rate report. Excellent management with efficient financial policies and practices, strong performance in budgeting resulting in a surplus, high flexibility in our budget, exceptionally strong liquidity, a robust institutional framework. These bonds represent a commitment to the future of Middlesex County by establishing partnerships with our municipalities while ensuring a safer and stronger community. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Chanel Scott-Palau?
Yes, thank you, Director, for being here. For the Arts Institute of Middlesex County, join us for a family-friendly weekend of exploring the grounds of East Jersey Old Town Village. The Fall Harvest Festival will take place over two weekends, Friday, October 25th to Sunday, October 27th, and Friday, November 1st to Sunday, November 3rd. On Fridays from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, on Saturdays and Sundays from 12:00 to 6:00 PM. Activities including wagon rides, music performances, seasonal rest, and pumpkin picking. Enjoy our general store gift shop, extended hours with pies, cider, villains, only jelly and more. From the Office of Workforce and Career Development, join the Financial Friday webinar on financial planning during a job or life transition. Gerard Rayho will discuss general financial planning, the aspects of 401K options, and provide investing tips. This Zoom webinar will take place on October 4th from 11:00 AM to 12:00 noon. The Thank You For Your Service Veterans Job Fair will take place on Wednesday, November 13th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the YMCA at the Biscataway Community Center. This event will offer U.S. veterans and their families an opportunity to find quality work, connecting them directly to the Middlesex County employers to explore open positions and career paths. Entry-level and experienced professionals are welcome to attend this event. Director, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Deputy Director Shanti Na?
Thank you, Director. From the Divisions of Environmental, Solid Waste, and Recycling, on Saturday, September 21st, the Divisions will hold another household hazardous waste collection event. This will be held at Middlesex County's Public Works Yard located at 750 Journey Hill Road in Sayerville. Residents can bring free-of-charge adhesive, car batteries, gasoline, propane tanks, and the like for safe disposal and recycling, thus preserving a greener and safer Middlesex County. The very next day, Sunday, September 22nd, our Divisions will be hosting another paper shred event. The shred will be held at Woodbridge's Public Works Yard, which is located at 225 Smith Street in the township. The program will be held from 9:00 AM to noon, rain or shine, and residents may bring free-of-charge paper items for shredding, thus protecting personal information and identity. There is no need to remove paper clips or staples, but please don't include other metals as these items can and have disabled the shredding devices. For additional information on either program or any other planned event, kindly visit the county's website or call the Divisions at 732-745-4170. And from the Office of the Sheriff, the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office is pleased to announce the start of its 11th Civilian Academy, which commences on September 19th. This eight-week program will provide residents with an understanding of the Sheriff's Office operation and the various services provided by the Sheriff's Office to our community in a continuing effort to serve and provide residents with various outreach programs. Over the course of the program, attendees will engage in interactive sessions covering topics such as the role and functions of the Sheriff's Office, canine demonstrations, a tour of the courthouse, along with many other informative topics and demonstrations. The academy will conclude with a graduation ceremony where participants will receive certificates of completion. The program is open to Middlesex County residents age 18 and older. We currently have 40 participants enrolled from municipalities throughout the county. For more information on the Sheriff's Civilian Academy, please contact Officer Brittany Brodinak at 732-745-3375, or email her at britneyb r i t t n e y dot brodinak b r o d n i k at c o dot middlesex dot n j dot u s. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie, it's a new one.
Thank you, Director. This October plays in the parks and the fall children's show is presented, James and the Giant Peach, for your family to see the musical based on Hoplow Children's Book. Show is held indoors and runs weekends, October and October, between October 5th and 19th. There are two shows each day, Monday and the fourth day. The kids are on sale now and going fast, so don't miss out. Also stay after the show for your children and greet the actors and get autographs. Spend your first Saturday outdoors with the Youth Conservation Corps at the First Fall Volunteer Fest. Celebrate National Park Lanes Day on September 28th at Assistant Trailwork and Habitat Improvements at Davidson Hill Pond Park in North Brunswick at 9:00 AM to noon. At the conclusion of the event, consider staying and exploring four miles of marked trails in the beautiful park. Information on these events and all our park programs can be found at the Middlesex County website and Parks and Recreation page. That concludes it.
Thank you. I just have a few comments. Tuesday, I had the opportunity to attend a naturalization ceremony next door in the Superior Court where they sworn 25 new U.S. citizens. They came from many countries, and it was really a nice ceremony that was held, and they were so happy, these individuals and their families were there, that they became United States citizens. It was really a touchy ceremony, and it makes you feel good and proud that we live in the greatest country in the world, and there's no doubt about it. Everybody wants to come here from wherever they live. Next, I'd like to also say tomorrow is POW MIA Day, and there's a service that's going to start at noon time at the Touching Memorial Park, and it's to bring awareness and recognition to those POWs or MIAs that are still out there. It helps their families have a little comfort knowing that we still didn't forget about those POWs or MIAs. And another thing I want to mention, October 5th is our Pancreatic Cancer Walk, 5K Walk Run. It will be held at Roosevelt Park. I encourage everyone, please come out and try to support this great cause. And all the money that's raised through that, it goes to pancreatic cancer research at the Public Cancer Institute. Again, we're going to try to make every effort to try to stop this dread of disease, and there's so many people that suffer from it, and I just encourage everyone that they can come out and support it. It would be greatly appreciated. Okay. Mr. Kelso, anything else to be added?
There are none.
Anything to be amended?
There are none.
Anything to be held?
There are none.
And this time I open up the meeting to the public. Anyone that wants to have a question on any resolutions listed, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Charlie Crowe-Bell. I live on Sedan Street here in Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'll start on page three. I'd like to learn about 1168, an arts mural project. Can you tell me where the mural will be?
Charlie, can you answer, figure that out? Anybody?
I don't have the back copy until you can.
Director. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a mural honoring first responders in Brunswick.
Okay. So another one, similar to the one that was done previously?
It looks like yes.
There. Move on to page five, number 1188. I'd like to understand a little bit about the proposal for a food security strategic plan, what that, you know, what the goal of that is, and why you're contracting out for it instead of doing it in-house.
Maggie?
Hi. So we're looking at to do a five-year strategic plan around food security, because as you know, we punish and we punish for health. But we also have a lot of firms, 160 community partners, creating Middlesex County, and Food Bank is a niche partner, the Food Security Advocate of New Jersey. So there's so much going on around food. We want to make it a precise plan.
Great. Hannah, I attended the Meal Recovery Coalition launch this week. I saw Jennifer was there, so it sounds promising. Let's see here, page six. The grant agreement, the South Plainfield for Open Space Recreation, Farm and Historic Preservation Trust fund to go to improvements in that park. I wanted to ask what the process was for choosing that park for the funds?
Well, they go through the Open Space Committee for review, and then the Open Space Committee makes their recommendation. I don't know if anybody else did. Is Larry or Dennis up here?
Yes. They stayed about two areas over. Just only referred, your source conflict is with additional writing, parking, some amenities all around the field. They needed these improvements. I think it's a 50/50. It was on a list, they mostly go with space. They pick and choose which ones they're doing each year, and they submit the drawings and all these, they send in all the drawings of the work that should be done, and they look at it and make decisions.
So artificial turf fields or?
No, it's not artificial turf.
Right. Okay. And I guess my question is, when you say the Open Space Committee, you don't mean the Open Space and Recreation Public Advisory Committee?
No.
That's a bit defunct. Who's on the real, secret Open Space Committee?
Say it again.
Who's on the real one, the committee that's meeting outside of the public?
I don't know, Larry, I'm sorry. Dennis, you have that available at this point?
No, I don't.
We could get back to you on that.
Okay, so it really is a secret. Next, page seven, I see expansion of contract for meta-architects. This is for designs of a field house and remote buildings for Thomas Edison Park. Isn't it true that the county hasn't gotten approval from the National Parks Service yet for this? Why are you spending almost a half million dollars on designs if it might get rejected?
John?
Yeah, so Charlie, as you know, to go through the regulatory process, both with DEP and with the National Park Service, you have to get to a sort of finished design, net finished product, right? And as I'm sure you're aware, over the past, I believe it was now two weeks ago, the public comment period for the National Park Service closed. So we would anticipate that we continue to work with the National Park Service, providing comments, anything like that, that they will ask for, and we anticipate receiving a final decision from them. And in the meantime, I know County Engineer Ron Center can speak a little bit to the specifics of the actual details with the contractor here, but in anticipation of, you know, receiving the National Park Service decision, just making sure we do everything we can to keep the process moving forward, and obviously understanding that we don't know yet what that decision is going to be.
Can you tell me what caused the scope of work to increase the cost to increase by almost $100,000?
Ron?
Time's up.
Can you answer?
Okay, so there's a couple of things. We asked the project be combined, both field house and the fields into one project. When we rebid it, it'll be one contractor rather than two. There were some suggestions by the vendor to rearrange the kitchen, the office space, the machines, the decent areas, so that all needs to be redesigned now. We felt that would prove easy to do so.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Any comments on resolutions listed only? Okay. Anyone else? Move the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kelso, does anyone have to go on anything separately?
No.
Okay, Mr. Kelso.
It's Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 24-1166 to Resolution 24-1223.
Motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
Second.
Ball call?
We're supposed to do supplemental bills?
If we have to do anything, just leave it on.
Okay. County Commissioner Asko Wabber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCallum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Ria?
Yes. This time I open up the meeting to the public on anything. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name's Benjamin Guy. I live in, actually, Somerset, 35 Pat Drive. I just have two questions for you guys because it's starting, it's going to roll over until Somerset, so the reason why I'm coming here is because some things, decisions in Middlesex is because we share borders, I wanted to ask questions. So one thing is, there's going to be a big housing study going into next year. I wanted to see exactly where we stood with certain housing procurement, because one of the things that's going to happen that's going to impact us directly on Somerset side is because on Route 27, they're going to be doing, they're going to be tearing down an affordable housing complex that's on Route 27. I'm not sure if that's public knowledge or not yet, but I was told this, and I got the report. So when that comes out, there's going to be a housing deficit that's going to be in that certain geographical area. So I want to see what they're going to do, the housing plan study that we can talk to somebody about, just to see how that's going to impact certain low-income areas and low-income people, because as I brought up last time, we have juveniles and everybody else that's going to be released over the next three to five years, and some of their families live in that area. So I'm just trying to be concerned about how we're going to place housing, and we're actually going to deal with certain things as we go along. So that was one comment. All my points.
I just want to make sure that Maggie, you're aware of this, or you'll keep up.
So I just want to know what the party is, so I can go with people.
Director, I just have a question. What municipality are you talking about? Because 27 is obviously extensive, a bunch of different communities, so.
Yes. So we talked about the Brunswick directly, but there's going to be impacts around that corridor, period.
Okay.
So I mean, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of work, I think everybody already publicly, institutionally knows this. There's a lot of work between Jersey Island and New with school building, there's a lot of work over on Route 27 corridor with Somerset Street that's going on. So we're talking about directly New Brunswick, but like I said, there's going to be other impacts. The reason why I said go down is because I know on the Somerset side also, they're talking about them in the YMCA, and that's been a conversation for a long timeframe that's coming up. So that's another congestion, a traffic study that's going to impact that whole Route 27 corridor. I know that's been talked about on my side for, with the school board, for almost like almost five years. So I think they're almost at pending status, and they said they've talked to New Brunswick about it, but I don't know how that impacts New Brunswick. So I'm just going over this because it congested deals on both sides of the fence, it's not just on one side of the fence, it's on both sides of the fence. That's one thing. The second portion I just got a question on is because I know you guys need an investment purchase to actually invest in the Heldridge for CTE program or a Voltech program that you're actually going to do. I want to see whether that would just extend to Middlesex people, or that's going to be a regional center that you guys will be doing, place that with the Heldridge altogether. So that's another conversation I got.
Well, the Heldridge purchase is going to work with our MAGA schools, that MAGA schools will work with the County College, and of course with Rutgers, to try to integrate all kinds of curriculum that would benefit students that go there, go to either one of these, and maybe get them ready for work in the hotel industry, whether it be through culinary, whether it be through management. And it's going to be a nice program that will be able to, of course, I'm not going to be the one to set up the curriculum because I'm not the professional there, but, you know, those folks will work together to come up with a curriculum to train folks and educate them in that hotel industry.
Yeah, and the reason why I asked that question is because you said the Rutgers portion. When you said the Rutgers portion, is that going to be integrated just for Middlesex County, or is that going to be regional for state opportunities altogether? Because I know the influence is about the night schools. I heard that specifically, but because of the Rutgers integration, Rutgers is a state in person, and what they're already going to be overseeing that, or is it going to be over to the public to actually do that? Because influence is key around New Brunswick, and actually a lot of things that go on in Middlesex County, but I want to see if it's going to be over to other participants for the state altogether. That's what I was asking.
John?
Yeah, so there's a team over at Middlesex College and the MAGA school that has begun the planning process for that new program, the new curriculum and so on. I think at this point, I'm pretty sure, I don't know if those details have been worked out yet. I will point out that in general, Middlesex College does accept students from out of the county. So there are certainly many Middlesex College programs that take students from outside of the county. I certainly can't make a replication on there because as to what may or may not, I don't think public this program is particular, but it's not unprecedented. So again, that'll be planned over the course of the next year or so, as I understand.
Yeah. My last question, because I know time. Because everybody's aware of this, and for to impact my holidays, the VNEC ports are going to be going through this potential, I'm not sure if it's going to be shut down around September 30th or October, it's all short.
Time's up.
And this impacts a lot of people. Is there any precautions that Middlesex County is taking on the other counties about this , has an impact on anything else that was going on with supplies in the area? Because there's a poor city in Middlesex County altogether. There's a couple of poor cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Charlie Crowe-Bell, once again. I want to start by commending the folks who were involved in a couple of events I neglected to mention last time, and I had attended the Garden Arts and Music Festival at the Earth Center, really enjoyed it, those are amazing event, really well-done. And I also got to stop by the Jazz Party in East Jersey Old Town over the weekend, and that was another great event, so thank you to those who were responsible. Anything you can share with me about Route 1 or Route 130, they continue to be among the deadliest roads in the state. I know we've talked about it at length, they're state roads, but you have power to speak to state legislators just like everybody else, and I wanted to ask if you have anything you can share about improving safety on either of those two highways?
At this point, I don't have anything new to share with you. You know our feeling up here that we want to make Middlesex County the safest county in the world, and we're going to make every effort to try to educate people to make sure that they drive safely. If somebody gets in a car and acts recklessly, that's beyond anyone's control, obviously. You know, I know someone that got killed on Route 1 by someone that was acting not like a good, safe driver, but it's a very unfortunate thing. Yes?
Also, Charlie, as you know, at the next Planning Board meetings, you're going to be delivering a presentation on Vision Zero, so.
Looking forward to it. Yeah, so thank you for that. I do, yeah, I do think there's a lot more to do besides education. I think the roads are not safely designed, they need to be improvements, and in fact, some of the proposed changes to Route 1 are going to add more cars and potentially make less, but moving to another transportation topic, I saw you opened a health center on Kennedy Boulevard in East Brunswick. How would somebody from, say, New Brunswick get there if they don't have a car? What's the best way to access that facility via public transport?
We have our ride system that they can call and make an appointment to go there.
I could get a ride from New Brunswick to East Brunswick on the ride?
I'm not so sure, but, you know, we try to make services accessible as much as we can, and to a certain extent, our hands are tied. Can we try to make things better? Yeah, we can, we always try.
County used to run more bus service. I think you need to do more of that. That's the answer, get a bus. Is it true that the college canceled, I'm sorry, just got limited time. Is it true that the college canceled the track team partly due to the closure of Thomas Edison Park?
The college stopped the track program for, I understand they're going to try to resurrect it for next year, depending on interest or participation to getting involved. And I would assume that that will happen. I'm hoping that'll happen for the athletes that want to get involved.
I mean, wouldn't that be an example of the CIO plan of hurting current students at Middlesex College? They had a good team, they had good athletes, and they wanted to play, but because you closed the park, they can't do it. Is that, isn't that an example of hurting the students?
John?
Charlie, as I believe you're aware, based on some communication with the college, there was also a compliance issue, which I believe you're aware of, and the compliance issue interested primarily in the track season, as I believe the president thinks he would.
So were there violations of NJCAA bylaws?
I'm not aware of the nature of those issues, Danny, until you respond directly. You're not aware, but you're aware that it's what caused the team to not. I'm aware that there's.
Well, I think we deserve answers about this, and I think the students deserve answers about it. I'm pretty sure that you put in writing that the Thomas Edison Park closure was the reason the team was being canceled by you, I mean, the official at the County College. And of course, there was an official at the County College who also gave a quote to the press about it. So that article, I shared it, you promised you'd read it. There were also allegations of job negligence and official misconduct on the part of the athletic director. Do you have any comment on those, for those investigated?
I have no comment on those. Those are personnel issues, and I'm not going to go into personnel issues. You know our policy here, we don't discuss in public personnel issues or litigation. I've said this to you time and time again.
I have a right to ask him.
Well, you could ask. I feel like, I feel like.
You know, I read an article that says there's official misconduct on the part of the athletic director, someone who worked with him closely is saying that. I got to ask about it. I don't think that's out of the line. What I do think is confusing about this is that the college put forth one story, and now a different story is being put forth, and we don't know what the truth is. I have to investigate.
Anyone else in the public? Motion to approve the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.